This is the Wednesday, February 17th, 2021, meeting of the Franklin Township Planning Board. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state and local urgency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, and has been determined that a public's attendance at meetings in the township would pose a risk to their health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers at the Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format and is being conducted utilizing virtual remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the state of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting to the planning board was posted in the township's official newspaper, The Courier-News, on the township website and on exterior doorways of the municipal building. This notice detailed the following needs of public participation in this meeting, which are the link to the virtual meeting via WebEx or a call-in number for those without the access. Public inspection of application materials is available via the township website and where by appointment, we will just go building. Formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. As a reminder to board members, please mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or to provide a vote, and please withhold all questions until all the applicants with this is at the time, at which time we will open for comment. Instructions for public input: For those members of the public that are watching via WebEx, to which to speak, there are two options: Press the raise hand button. To use this feature, click on their participants icon in the lower right corner of the screen, which will open the new participants window on the right side of the screen. In the lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click on that hand icon. Or use the chat function, either use the default, which is "everyone," or chat "Mark Healy." Do not send a message to Christine Woodbury, who is unable to receive messages during the meeting, and do not use the Q&amp;A, because that section will not be checked during the meeting. For the public that are listening via the call-in number who wants to speak, press star three. At the time of meeting, township staff will announce your name, and you will have the opportunity to draw a comment. Please provide your name and address. If you provide a statement, the board attorney will swear you in. If you're speaking, if on WebEx, please press the lower hand button, or if you're hearing, press star three again. So with that, um, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the people of the United States, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. It is both with liberty and justice for all. She's called her own.
Councilman Chase? Councilman Chase? You're on mute, but I see your name. Carl Howe?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq?
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow? I see your name, Jen. I know you're here. Mustafa Mansray? Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Carol Schmidt?
Here.
Sammy Shabon, I see he's in, he's in the call-in. I see his name, and he's muted. Jennifer?
All right, I'll mute Jennifer.
Jennifer, go ahead. You're here.
Yep, I'm here. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hi. Sammy, you're here?
I am here. It's telling me that I'm not listed, that my email's not listed, and it doesn't match the panelist's email address, so I had to call in this way.
All right, I'll check that. And then Chairman Ressini?
Here.
Okay.
Thanks, Christine. So it doesn't look as though we have any minutes or resolutions to do. Is that correct, Mark?
That's Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so as you learned at the last planning board meeting, Cecile MacGyver is moving out of town, and that was her last planning board meeting. So why to move expeditiously for the election of a vice chair? This is especially important in case I don't make a meeting. And I would like to nominate Charles Brown. After thinking about this at some length, I thought Charles was a good selection because we actually have a fairly young board in terms of, you know, recent appointments. And so Charles has been here, well, one of the longest-serving members outside of myself, I think, and Bob Thomas. And the other thing is Charles has a lot of planning experience, and so I thought he would be a good selection. Certainly, I think his ability to chair a meeting is important, and I think that's strong as well. So I would like to nominate Charles Brown for vice chair.
I would second it.
Do we have any further nominations? If not, I move the nominations to be closed.
Second.
Okay. Councilman Chase?
Yes?
Carl Howe?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Absolutely, yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
Did she answer? Because mine's just going around.
Yes.
Okay. Sammy Shabon?
Yes.
And Chairman Ressini?
Yes.
Congratulations, Charles.
Thank you all very much. I'm very honored. I've been here now for over a decade, and being a part of this planning board has been one of those achievements that I'm most proud of. You all are a fantastic group, and I look forward to continuing to serve the township. Thank you.
Christine is a new member, but not another one.
Thanks, Charles, and welcome as vice chair.
I'm on.
Continuing working with you in this capacity. And I guess we'll await council appointment for a new member to replace Cecile. All right, so moving on, we have public comments. So this is general public comment, so we'll leave you to that. I'll make a motion to open.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the meeting is now open for general planning comments from the public that are not the subject of a separate hearing. Please note that if you were here for Three Ronson LLC, that hearing will have its own open public comment session. So if you have general planning comments, please either use the chat feature to raise your hand or press star three.
I'm not seeing any, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I would move the
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we move on to the one hearing we have tonight, which is Three Ronson LLC PLN 20-00012. This was carried from January 20th, 2021, with no further notification required. So is ever here to present that? You're on.
All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Just Christine was having something issue. Did you, are we bringing Three Ronson on? Mike, are we bringing Three Ronson? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, we are.
All right, sorry about that. I was dealing with a technical issue on the side here. All right, so I just brought in Ms. Jennings, who's the attorney for the application. And we have a few of their experts I'll bring over as well. Because Ms. Jennings, I brought over obviously yourself, Mr. Much, Sid Moody, and Sonia Olmanson?
Yeah.
And
I'm sorry, is Doug there, the traffic engineer?
Uh, yes, I'll bring him over as well.
And Cam Lesh, have you got, I don't have my
I think, I think he just popped on. I'll bring him over as well. All right, so I think you have everybody.
Yes.
As you can go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. For the record, I'm Donna Jennings from the law firm of Valence Goldman &amp; Spitzer on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is here this evening seeking final major site plan approval to construct a one-story, approximately 3,000-square-foot building with an accessory drive-through on property located at 1165 State Highway Route 27 and identified as Lot 43 in Block 88.01 on the township's tax maps. The property is situated in the GB zone and is improved with a retail development known as Veronica Plaza, located at the intersection of Route 27 and Veronica Avenue. By resolution memorialized on June 5th, 2019, this board granted the applicant preliminary major site plan and bulk variance approval to construct an approximately 3,000-square-foot building with a drive-through and preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a drive-up ATM on the property, which since been constructed. In addition, a bulk variance was granted to permit the applicant to exceed the maximum permitted impervious coverage, where 70% is permitted and the board approved coverage at 70.82%. As a condition of approval, the applicant was required to secure final major site plan approval once a fast-food restaurant tenant was identified and were secured. And we now have secured a tenant, Dunkin' Donuts, and so we're seeking final major site plan approval to divide the approved building into two units, with Dunkin' occupying slightly more than half the building, approximately 1,748 square feet, but the proposed drive-through will be dedicated to Dunkin's use, and the remaining 1,150 square feet will be dedicated to a future retail use. A wall will separate the two units, and the final site plan slightly reduces the approved building square footage by approximately 93 square feet. In addition to final major site plan approval, the applicant is also seeking two bulk variances. The first is to increase the permitted maximum impervious coverage slightly to 72.5%, where, as I stated earlier, 70% is permitted, and the preliminary approval was granted with a site increase of 70.82%. Now, the second bulk variance is for the proposed sign package for Dunkin' Donuts, where two wall signs permitted, and the applicant proposes five wall signs. In support of the proposal, the following witnesses will testify: Paul Much, the site engineer; Sid Moody, the Dunkin' Donuts representative; Kamli Shaw, the architect; Doug Polianek, the traffic engineer; and Sonia Omnibosman, the professional planner. And as a matter of record-keeping, right now I just have two reports: An updated CME report dated February 10th, 2021, and a planners report dated February 11th, 2021. I don't know if there was ever a report issued by your traffic consultant or any other departments in the town, but those are the two that I have.
I sent an email today that I had not heard back from the traffic. I believe you all were on that. And as soon as I get it, Donna, I will send it over to you.
Okay, great. So I think with that, what I'd like to do is call up our first witness, who will be the site engineer, Paul Much, and get him sworn in, and we can begin our testimony. And I don't know, we submitted a number of exhibits to the town. I don't know if we share screen or how that's going to work, but I think Paul's going to be relying on most of the exhibits, I think A1 through A7. Okay, so I see Paul's on.
Yes, can everybody hear me?
They're going to swear you in first.
Great.
If you could raise your right hand for me. You swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
I do.
You can state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
Paul Much, M is in Mary, U T C H, from Stonefield Engineering, located at 15 Spring Street in Princeton, New Jersey.
Great, thank you.
And if you could, Paul, just for the benefit of the board, give your background and qualifications.
Certainly. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I graduated from Rone University with a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. I've been practicing the field for roughly eight years now, with specific experience on applications like the one you're going to see this evening, and I've been accepted as an expert witness in civil engineering testimony before 30-plus land use boards in the state of New Jersey.
Thanks, Paul. You're accepted.
Okay, Paul, just for the record, was the site plan prepared under your direction?
It was.
And if you could describe the site and the area around the site, and if you're going to refer to any of the exhibits, do you have the ability to share screen, or how are we doing that?
I do.
So I gave him the ability.
Okay, perfect. So go ahead.
This is Exhibit A2. It's an aerial exhibit prepared by our office dated December 14th, 2020. It's merely to familiarize the board with the existing site and the products and the property we are here to discuss this evening. We're at the corner of Route 27 and Veronica Avenue. And a preliminary approval, like was discussed, was associated with this four- or 3,000-square-foot kind of generic fast food with a drive-through building. And we also had a preliminary and final approval approved for an ATM, which our office also worked on, and that is currently constructed and would be to the west of the proposed development site. It's a five-acre site in the general business zone, and it's surrounded by commercial uses with gasoline facilities along the intersection and other shopping centers as you move out and away from the property. So it's a very appropriate property for this added pad site that we're looking to, we're looking to add to this site. With that, I will move to Exhibit A3, which is a colorized site rendering of the site plan that was submitted as part of our package to this, to this board. And I will mention that there were a couple of changes made between when this was prepared last month as compared to what was submitted. They're very minor, and I'll detail those in testimony this evening. But the site plan, in our opinion, has only gotten better since that time. So the proposed development is the development of a pad site, which is a specific goal and a specific intention of your zoning ordinance, to bring aesthetic appeal and bring additional use to shopping centers like the one that you're seeing this evening. Now, anybody that's used this intersection in recent time knows that there's not a lot of aesthetic appeal at the intersection itself. It lacks street trees, it lacks planting, and it essentially lacks flair in a way. So we're looking to bring that to this intersection with this development and with this Dunkin' Donuts and a potential for a retail tenant in the future. Now, the proposal that you're seeing on the screen tonight and what you're seeing is very similar to what was approved as part of the preliminary approval. The building has been updated, but is generally in the same position and size. It is slightly smaller, at a little over 2,900 square feet. And instead of one large fast-food drive-through restaurant taking up the entire building, we are looking at a two-tenant building with a smaller Dunkin' Donuts along the frontage of the state highway and another retail tenant to be named in the future. This is just an efficient use of this building, efficient use of this area to kind of bring two tenants to this site and to bring up the character of the overall development. We've seen that slight impervious coverage increase. The ATM increased it slightly, and that variance was approved at that time. And then over the course of the design process and working with your design professionals, some of the curb lines moved to the east and closer to the state highway, and that added to the impervious coverage on-site. It's a de minimis change that goes from 70.8% to 72.5%, and the stormwater management facilities, which have received a significant upgrade as part of this application, are designed to handle and to accommodate all of the stormwater associated with that increase in impervious and with the increase in impervious associated with this development. I'll touch on briefly in the site plans that were submitted as part of this application. This is Sheet C5 from the package that was submitted. I'm not sure if we want to mark this. It is just part of the package. It's the overall site plan package.
If it was part of the package, you don't need to mark it.
Exactly. Okay, that's excellent. So what we've done is compared, and I'll go back and forth between the two exhibits, but I've highlighted the two areas on the screen with a red box. What we've done on the western side of the lot, near the ATM, is removed a couple of parking spaces that were unneeded, and we had a surplus of parking, so we were able to avoid a variance. And that was to allow us to move the trash enclosure further from the street to meet the 20-foot setback requirement of your ordinance and also allow for efficient movement of the truck into that trash enclosure. We kind of reoriented it to make it easier. It also eliminates a concern from a previous review letter that detailed that there was concern that there'd be cars backing into the ingress lane or into the main drive aisle of the shopping center. So we've addressed all of that without creating new variances, and we feel it's an improvement to the overall site, and we've worked with your professionals on it. There's also a slight modification to the curb line along the eastern side. This was just to better protect the ADA spaces and the spaces in the shopping center itself, very minor. No major changes to the overall development, but as you can see, this site plan and the site plan that was previously rendered are extremely similar, and the building and the overall operations remain the same in this. We've also added several of the site amenities that the engineer's review letter was looking for, as well as the planners. We've added brick pavers to the sidewalks and to the sidewalks leading to this building. We're also going to add those to the crosswalks to make sure that we're kind of differentiating the pedestrian walkways as they've requested. We're also going to add a bike rack, which is one of the site amenities that was requested. And there are some design waivers associated with the overall site and the overall site amenities as we were focused specifically on this intersection as part of this application. The benefit of this development and certainly what makes it clear that it fits within the the objective of the township is that the bulk and parking regulations, other than the than the impervious coverage variance that we're seeking this evening for that de minimis increase, are all complied with. We're not asking for setback variances. We're not asking for building coverage variances. We're very much well within the ordinance standards for what this site can accommodate and what this pad site specifically can accommodate on this site. The access for the development overall remains the same. There's existing driveways on Veronica Avenue as well as the state highway. We've updated our permit with the NJDOT, and the access remains on Veronica with no major changes. And the draw, you'll hear more about the traffic from our traffic consultant as we move through this application this evening. The parking remains consistent with what the ordinance requires. We have 100 and 150-plus spaces associated with this development, and we've provided a sufficient amount, 11 spaces in the vicinity of Dunkin' Donuts. But there's a significant number of spaces outside of the specific Dunkin' Donuts development that will allow for parking if there's ever a need for additional, other than what's on the specific pad site here. The proposed drive-through queue for the Dunkin' Donuts exceeds a Dunkin' Donuts standard, which is typically seven vehicles. We show nine vehicles stacked from the drive-through window and back to the drive aisle. This is something that we feel is sufficient. We've provided that information as part of this package, and our traffic engineer will testify to it. But the benefit of the queue that we have is that even if there is a very busy moment where it exceeds the nine cars, which is not expected, but possible, that those cars would not block or at any point a driveway or roadway. They would simply either recirculate the site and come back when there is a space or have limited impact on the overall operations of the site. So we're also protected and not going to have a significant difference or distance between our drive-through operations and any site driveways or public roadways. So it's very, very positive for the overall development and its ability to accommodate this drive-through. The circulation on-site and around this pad site is also very much in line with Dunkin' Donuts typically provides for their developments. In their standards, they come with a 10-foot drive-through lane, which is provided, and a 10-foot bypass lane, which is also provided around the building. And we have a larger area on either side as you exit those drive-through lanes. When you're coming around the curves and making the turns, there's even more space than that, and we've provided what we feel is a sufficient drive-through lane as well as bypass that will allow this site to operate very efficiently. The main topic that we wanted to cover this evening is certainly the signage that always comes up when you're adding pad sites to a development, a commercial development. And I will move quickly to our signage exhibit, just to highlight where our signs are proposed on this site, so we can talk through them a little bit. And you'll see those in color when the architect testifies a little later in our presentation this evening. This is marked Exhibit A4. It's a signage exhibit prepared by our office again. Now, the variance that we're seeking this evening is a variance for the total quantity of signs that are proposed. There are two permitted and five proposed. There are Dunkin' Donuts signs that you see at the bottom right and the top left of your site that are proposed on each of the facades of the Dunkin' Donuts, specifically to target the traveling public along the state highway, Veronica Avenue, and as well as to identify the main entrance to people that are within the shopping center already. There's also a branding sign, an additional sign facing the state highway, this double D sign that you see located at the top right-hand side of the sheet. This sign, again, is meant to target and show the traveling public at that intersection that this is a Dunkin' Donuts. And you'll see that they're very much in line and designed appropriately with the architecture. These are not egregious signs. They all fall below the maximum of 30 square feet, which your ordinance requires. The DD sign is 18 square feet, and the Dunkin' signs are 25 square feet each. There's also one additional sign, which represents "America Runs on Dunkin'." It's a much smaller 12-square-foot sign that's intended and mounted lowers. It's intended to attract attention from pedestrians interior to the shopping center. You'll see these on the architectural renderings as we move through the presentation, but from our professional opinion, these are appropriately sized and appropriately positioned to meet the branding and the wayfinding that Dunkin' Donuts is looking for within this shopping center. I'll jump back to Exhibit A3. Just to touch on the stormwater management that I started to get into a little bit earlier, we're providing a significant upgrade in the proposed condition over what is existing. We're taking the existing detention base, in which is located to the south and west of the development, and we're upgrading that, expanding it, and making sure it meets modern standards for stormwater improvements. We're also adding a rain garden as well as an underground water treatment device to meet the 80% water quality treatment that's required for the additional impervious we're proposing here. So it's a major upgrade of the existing infrastructure. We're adding more infrastructure to bring this site to modern standards. And the approach that we're proposing here is intended to comply with all of the township ordinance requirements, as well as the NJDEP. And we intend to work with your professionals to ensure that that design and all the comments that they have on that design are satisfied to their satisfaction at the end of this project. One of the main benefits that we touched on a little bit earlier is the landscaping and the aesthetic appeal at the intersection. So as you can see in this rendering, it's actually been improved a little bit in the proposed conditions. There's a couple more trees located along the state highway. We are upgrading this intersection with new tree plantings, new shrub plantings, and screening for our trash enclosure that should complement and an appeal to the aesthetics of this intersection, as well as the quality of the building we'll provide as an anchor at the intersection. These shrubs, these trees, and these plantings around the building, as well as the perimeter landscaping, are intended to shield headlights, as well as provide a year-round visual flair to the intersection, so you see life and you see color all year round. So there's a good mixture of grasses, flowering shrubs, and other types of plantings that are meant to to provide a year-round interest for the traveling public. There's also additional enhancements that aren't shown on the exhibit that you're looking at currently on-site that were part of the preliminary approval. We're upgrading the interior landscaping, which you can see at the top left of your site, and we're also enhancing the buffering on the westernmost side of the site with additional trees, evergreen trees and shrub plantings, and that was all part of the preliminary approval that has been carried through to the final approval and is included as part of these plans. In addition to the landscaping, we are providing lighting at the intersection, lighting just to make sure that the drive-through lanes and proposed parking are lit adequately, as well as the parking closest to the Dunkin' Donuts entrance, as well as the pedestrian walkway. So there's four area lights proposed and two wall-mounted lights. All of the area lights are shielded and directed in towards the parking lot. The wall-mounted lights are directed interior to the site, and the light spill that's proposed as part of this application falls below that order of approval for the ATM. And with the shields and all the shielding that we're providing for these LEDs, as well as the advanced technology of LED lighting, the light spill goes into the roadway and then into the driver's eye. It's very low and falls below a half a foot candle, so you're not going to see an excessive glare or any sort of distraction or impedance on the traveling public along Veronica Avenue. And then the state highway would stay at basically zero light spill, since we are so far setback from there. So the lighting is state-of-the-art LED lights with shields intended to prevent light spill that would cause any sort of negative impact to the traveling public around the site. And then to wrap my direct testimony, we have outside agency approvals, either in hand or pending. DOT has the the access permit, as I've mentioned, has been has been worked out with the DOT without the new major access permit. We are being admitted to and waiting for our hearing with the DRCC. They are they are also reviewing the stormwater. So the stormwater system is getting a very, very heavy-handed review and will comply with all applicable regulations when all is said and done. And the SED approval is pending, and we expect that in the coming weeks as well. And all will be wrapped up as this project moves towards final compliance. To touch briefly on the consultants' reports, we've we've reviewed those reports. And other than the testimony that you'll hear tonight on the on the overall zoning relief and some of the things that we're requesting relief from, we intend to work with your professionals and comply with the vast majority of those comments. And and we feel that this will be a very positive application for this development site. And Donna, that that wraps up my direct testimony. If there's anything else you'd like to you'd like to touch on here before we move on, please feel free.
Yeah, I did. I did want to touch on one of the CME report, February 10th. One of the comments, six, there was a call out for a variance about the attached sign being only three feet permitted and S1DD was approximately three and a half feet. The applicant intends on complying with the ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So that'd be a modification to that sign, assuming that we got all the signs that we've asked for. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there, well, Paul's testifying, is there any way Paul can go into a little more about why you feel you need to increase in impervious coverage versus versus what was approved in the preliminary?
Yeah, the the main the main target of the impervious coverage increase here was we we think we we moved the curb line of these parking spaces on the eastern side of the site from in line with with these parking spaces to a little bit further over. And that was intended to address a concern just about cars backing up into the drive-through lanes. And we feel that we've accomplished that, and I'll even zoom in on this here. You can see that this curb line is a little farther pushed back, and that attributes to the impervious coverage increase. And what it does is it provides a significant backup lane for people in these parking spaces to ensure that as people are leaving the drive-through and people are backing out of the parking spaces, there's enough room there for safety. So really, it's it's about safety and the minimus improve the de minimis increase in impervious is balanced by a significant upgrade in the stormwater management system that's that's intended to handle all of the stormwater associated with that change, as well as the overall development as a whole.
Thanks. That's helpful.
I think also too, are we not, we have like one or two extra parking spaces, which I guess technically we could eliminate, but we think it's better to have the parking spaces available to the patrons of this of the shopping center overall. Is that correct, Paul?
Yeah, that's correct. And even on the rendering that you're looking at today, we've removed two spaces already to kind of mitigate some of those impervious coverage concerns. And we feel that the the spaces that we're providing in and around the Dunkin' Donuts are are important for their operations, but there is an opportunity of to to remove some because we do have a surplus. But I feel like the site client, the plan design here and the site planning is is sound.
Okay, thanks. Well, Paul, you remain sworn in for any other board questions. Why don't we, Donna, go ahead to your next one?
Sure. The next witness is going to be Sid Moody, the operator of the Dunkin' Donuts.
If you could raise your right hand for me. Your testimony going to provide is the truth, all truth, and nothing but truth.
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
Yes, my name is Sitanchu Agosid Moody. Address is 22 Eagle Court, Mammoth Junction, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
If you could, Mr. Moody, just for the record, what is your role in the project?
So I'm a franchisee of Dunkin' Donuts, and I'm leasing a space from the applicant Three Ronson LLC.
Okay, and have have you operated, you own and manage any other Dunkin' Donuts?
Yes, I have Dunkin' Donuts in the area between from New Brunswick, North Brunswick, South Brunswick, and Letham.
Okay, I think you actually have one right on Route 27?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And why did you seek this location to operate Dunkin' Donuts? What was it about this site?
So Dunkin' Brands is very particular and about the selection of locations. And this location meets all their criteria for a successful location. They feel they have, you know, the right demand and the location. There's a lot of growth in the area and there's demand for Dunkin' Donuts in that area. So Dunkin' also assists in looking and, you know, at all the area around and looking at the the operations of Dunkin' Donuts, whether it'd be suitable for the area. And this site cleared all their criterions and it had high scores.
And if you could, since you're going to be the one operating the specific store, if approved by the board, can we just go through some of the details, such as hours of operations and numbers of employees that you think will be anticipated being at the site?
Sure. So our hours of operation would be 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and it would be seven days a week. And the number of employees, we'd have probably about 12 employees, but all of them wouldn't be working at the same time. In the morning, we'd have five or six employees working. And in the afternoon, evening, it would be two to three employees working.
So basically, at peak hour, the most employees you'd have in the site would be about six.
That's correct.
Okay. And although I imagine everybody knows what you sell, why don't you just rattle off a couple of the items that are being offered at the Dunkin' Donuts?
Sure. We we sell a lot of coffee and donuts that everyone knows, no secret there. But we sell a lot of other beverages and bagels and bakery and and breakfast sandwiches and, you know, espresso beverages and other snacks.
Okay. And what about your deliveries? How often are deliveries coming to the site and what kind of vehicles do they come in?
Yeah, so we have only one supplier that gives us all our products, and that delivery is typically only once a week. And that typically comes in a truck trailer. And most of the time, it would be a lockbox delivery at night. So when we are closed, they would enter the premises through a lockbox and and put the products in. And we would also get a delivery of donuts every night that comes in a box truck. And they also do a lockbox delivery in the middle of the night or very early morning. And that's every night.
So essentially, sometime between 11:00 PM and 5:00 AM, when you're closed, they're coming with these deliveries?
That's correct.
Okay. And can you maybe just describe a little bit about the kitchen operations, what's going on there?
Yeah, so our kitchen operations, we are mainly our assembly operation. You know, our our products come half, half, partially cooked and frozen. And, you know, the donuts and bakery's trash, we do have an oven on premises where we do some of the baking. But mainly, we are in assembly operation with, you know, ovens and toasters and to, you know, cook to the order.
Okay, and can you just indicate for the record your anticipated trash pickup?
We would have two trash pickups a week, and the recycle would be, you know, as needed. Typically, it's once a week.
And but what about recycling?
Yeah, that would be about once a week.
Okay. And with respect to the 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 request for the signage variance, the five signs that are proposed with this particular product, could you explain to the board why it's important to you as a franchisee to have these five particular signs?
So for Dunkin' Donuts, it's it's all about branding and recognition. And this is a unique building where we have exposure from three sides. So we have one side, which is, you know, for the pedestrians and people who are already inside the center. And that's where one of our entrances is. So there is some signage on that side. And then you have one side facing Route 27, which is a primary side of the building. And that's where we put the two signs with the Dunkin' and DD, which is, you know, pretty much part of their branding. And it's kind of required on every building as far as possible. And then you have one side, which is facing Veronica Avenue. So that's where I think signage is very critical because if someone is coming from Veronica Avenue, if we don't have a sign there, you're not going to see us. So that's why for this building, the signage is critical. And it's not really big in size. It is just to kind of get that exposure to different sides of the building.
Okay, thank you. That's so the direct testimony I have for Mr. Kamlesh.
Okay, thanks, Donna.
Yeah, I should have said Mr. Moody. My next witness is the architect, Kamlesh Shaw.
Hello, everybody.
Good evening. If you could raise your right hand for me, sir. Your testimony going to provide is the truth, all truth, and nothing but truth.
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name for the record, please, and give us your address.
First name is Kamlesh, K-A-M-L-E-S-H, last name Shaw, S-H-A-A. Office location is One Liberty Way in Cranbridge, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
And just for the record, Mr. Shaw, can you give your background and qualifications?
Yes, I have a bachelor's degree in architecture from university at Bombay. I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, New York, Maryland. I've been in practice for the last 22 years. I have represented several cases in the last 22 years in several of the townships in New Jersey, New York, and Maryland. I have represented clients for similar projects for over, I would say, 400-plus projects. And again, as I said, we've we've done several Dunkin' Donuts, including for this applicant.
Great. He's accepted, Donna. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. And I think you're going to rely on a couple of exhibits as well. And Mr. Shaw, do you have those?
Yes.
Can you share the screen?
Yeah, I do. Should I share? Can I share the screen?
Yeah, you should be able to share a screen, I think, if Mark lets you.
He should be good to go.
Okay, so one of the first exhibits that I wanted to present is the floor plan Exhibit A8, which represents the floor plan. The building, as we could see, is approximately 2,900 square feet, a little bit under 3,000 square feet. It is designed to house Dunkin' Donuts, which is approximately 1,748 square feet. And the rest of the space is planned to be a similar retail space. We do not know yet who the tenant might be. As far as... Yes. Oh, okay. So as far as Dunkin' Donuts is concerned, we know obviously that is a fixed use that we're designing this for. Dunkin' Donuts, right now, on the right side is the Lincoln Highway, Route 27. At the bottom of the plan is Veronica Avenue. The drive-through is located on facing Veronica. And then the one single entryway that is facing Route 27, Lincoln Highway, and that enters into Dunkin' Donuts seating area. And there are two doors leading into Dunkin' Donuts space. One of the doors, closer to Route 27, is accessing the seating area for Dunkin' Donuts. And the back door, most of the backside of the space, is a door accessing their work area or back of the house area. As Sabart mentioned, this location is strictly, we call it a satellite location. There's no cooking on site. The front side is where the seating is going to be. And in the service area in in on the bottom side. And the backside, where my cursor is, is specifically serving the drive-through area. The utility space and the service area is in the back where they prepare the donuts, their walk-in refrigerator and freezers, and then the two handicap accessible bathrooms. This is going to be a fully accessible space. Again, the 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 building is a one-story building. It it has a drive-through location. The as part of the, and I'll go through the exhibit, there is a menu board located in where my cursor is, which has a canopy. And a canopy for the drive-through location. And there's one more, we call it the height restriction bar, which will be located on the drive-through lane as well. This is Exhibit A8. The next exhibit, what I would like to bring in, is Exhibit A9. Again, this was submitted as a black and white elevation with our packet, which is just a colored rendition of the same exhibit. What we are showing is the north elevation, which is basically the backside of the retail space of their front entryway. The south elevation is facing Route 27. And the west elevation is facing Veronica Avenue, where you see the drive-through window and a canopy. And then the east elevation is basically facing the retail center, where you can see the door on the one on the far left and the other in the middle of the building. And then there's a door leading into the service area of the retail space itself. What we've tried in in the building, we've tried to stay consistent with the commercial design guidance of the zoning ordinance. And what it shows is that we do not think we do. And therefore, what we've done in in designing the building is we have basically taken advantage of some of the variation of the the parapet height, which does not, which gives us a little bit of a break in in the monotony of the building and also in using various different materials and different textures, which not only is consistent with the the buildings on site, but it gives you that feel of not a flat facade, gives you a little bit of a break with using the hardy planks of various different textures. And it gives us a little breakout of of the facade, even though it's it's almost like a straight building with the parapet, varying parapet heights and various different materials with texture and color. So we're trying to maintain the ordinance requirement, as I said, Section 112.2 or 6.4 and 5. And we've tried to provide an interesting facade just because it is, again, has two exposures, one from Lincoln Avenue and and the other one to Veronica. That's Exhibit A9. The last exhibit that I have is Exhibit A10, which shows the canopy over the ordering menu board, which is the speaker where you're speaking to for ordering to just give a a protection for time being for the customers. This is a standard prototype exhibit. This is not drawn by us. It is just extracted from Dunkin' standards. Basically, that's what I have done. I believe I've covered most of the questions or our our testimony.
Yeah, so also, I know that Mr. Healy, in his report, he pointed out some sections of the ordinance that he wanted to make sure that we complied with. And some of them were directly related to architecture, which I thought was most appropriate for you to address. So I think kids review comments, there's no page number in these reports. I think, starting on page about three. Can you go pull that report out and address some of those comments that Mr. Healy had?
Right, so Page 3, Section 112 dash 2 or 6.5K, address building architecture, avoid the boxy-like bulky appearance of commercial building, use varied materials and textures and/or colors. Use varied materials and textures and/or colors. As I was talking about my, representing the elevations, as you could see, we've used various different colors and textures. And also have taken some liberty on bumping up the parapet to give the, take away the boxy look. So I think we've tried to conform with the requirement of 112-206.5K. The section 112-206.4A, I believe, a building of portions of it should be oriented in a side that create a strong relationship with the adjacent structures. Now, obviously, the engineer, site civil engineers, has discussed and provided information on the orientation. It's parallel to the existing building. And it's strictly based on the circulation of the property. So that also is consistent with the ordinance requirement. Other than that, I guess, as I said, the color, the texture, the heights gives us a justification on conforming to the section.
Okay, then on page, I think it's five, there are some comments with regard to section 112, 206, 9, C, 2, and 3?
Right, so the 206.9 is mechanical equipment screening. Just so we know, that this use would require maximum of two rooftop units. And we're located, we're locating that in the center, almost the center of the building, which we feel that it would really, the parapet would screen the units. And it would not be visible from the site. One other thing that is working in our favor is this site is elevated from the street level. But once you're working around the street, you would not be able to see the units on the roof. The mechanical equipment basically is located on the roof and not on the ground.
Okay, what about the one right above that? There's the note with respect to the masonry trash enclosure?
Well, I would, I would, I would say that that the civil engineer can talk about. But the idea is to match the building facade sort of to have the enclosure complemented.
Okay. And then I think you hit all the architectural comments. Okay, thank you. That's all my direct testimony. We can call up the next witness, which is the traffic engineer?
Sounds good.
Doug, you there? There you are.
If you could raise your right hand for me? You can raise your right hand for me? There we go. Thank you. You swear the testimony, you're going to provide us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth.
I do.
You can state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
Sure, my name is Douglas Polyniak, P-O-L-Y-N-I-A-K. Business address is 181 West High Street in Somerville.
And if you could, just for the benefit of the board, give your background and qualifications?
Sure, I have a bachelor's of science in civil engineering from Lehigh University. I acquired that degree in 1998. Since that time, I've been working in the field of traffic engineering. I've been licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey for approximately the last 16 years. I've testified before approximately 90 to 100 municipal boards within the state of New Jersey. I've been before Franklin boards on a couple of occasions.
Okay, you're accepted. Go ahead and proceed.
Thank you.
Doug, if you could, your office testified at the preliminary site plan, correct?
That's right.
And at that time, your office had submitted a traffic impact statement dated January 17, 2019, and some testimony with respect to the traffic impact?
That is right.
And I believe that there was a request for a revised report to make sure that there was no issue with the Dunkin' Donuts going into the site. If you could just go through your findings, please?
Sure, we prepared an updated traffic report, December 15, 2020. And this was to update our prior report based on the fact that a tenant was known as the Dunkin' Donuts, which has some slightly different trip generation characteristics than a general fast food restaurant. And we also further reviewed the proposed stacking for the drive-through at this location. The I T, or Institute of Transportation Engineers, has a more specific landing for Dunkin' Donuts. It's a coffee donut shop with drive-through, which makes sense, because these types of uses generally experience more traffic during the morning peak hours as opposed to evening rush, like a McDonald's or Burger King might do. So what we did is we ran the trip generation and found that there's a slight increase in the morning of about 40 peak hour trips, but a pretty substantial decrease of about 60 peak hour trips. The increase in trips, though, did require a access permit from NJDOT. And that permit has been applied for and secured. There's no changes to the access or anything within the state highway right of way. It's just that when you generate a certain amount of peak hour trip increase, they do want to review the application, and they did that and granted its approval. Also worth noting is that for a fast food restaurant, especially such as this, within a retail plaza, you're going to have a substantial amount of trips that are shared trips that come from other uses within the site. Also, many, at least half of the trips, will be passed by trips which are drawn off of the existing stream of travel along Route 27 and Veronica. So while there is a potential increase in traffic over, you know, the prior approval in the morning peak hour, a lot of that traffic is going to be either onsite or bypassing the roads currently.
And if you could just also touch on the actual drive-through and the queuing that's been proposed here, and whether or not that's adequate for this use?
Absolutely. Yes, the, as you heard earlier, the site is proposing a stacking for nine vehicles. The Institute of Transportation Engineers recommends stacking for eight. And based on our experience, that number is pretty much spot-on. And sometimes occasions, a nine as well. So with nine proposed for this site, it's fully anticipated that the stacking will be confined within the proposed lane. And as Mr. Much stated earlier, if on a particularly busy day or something were to occur, the stacking could, you know, extend into the parking area and not reaching any kind of high-travel drive-through lane, driveways or driveways impeding traffic. So I fully anticipate that there's more than enough stacking proposed with the ability to accommodate a stranger, higher stacking deck.
Okay, thank you. That's all the direct testimony I have for the traffic engineer. If we could just bring up Sonia, our planner?
If you could raise your right hand for me? You swear the testimony, you're going to provide us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth.
I do.
You can state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
Sure, Sonia Ommensen, last name spelled O-M-M-U-N-D-S-E-N. My business address is 92 Park Avenue, Rutherford, New Jersey.
Thank you.
And if you could, Sonia, for the benefit of the board, give your background and qualifications?
Sure. I have a bachelor's of engineering and civil engineering from Vanderbilt University. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as a licensed professional planner. I've been involved in multiple applications within the state of New Jersey, including similar uses with associated variance applications. I've also testified in front of multiple boards within the state, as well as provided planning testimony in addition to engineering testimony.
Thanks, Sonia. Donna, she's accepted.
Great, thank you. Did you have an opportunity to review the site plan, the ordinance, and the master plan?
Yes, I have.
And you also visited the site?
No, I have not actually.
Okay. That's okay. If you could just describe the property, please?
Sure, the property is identified as 1165 New Jersey State Highway Route 27, also known as Lot 43 and Block 881 in the town of Franklin. The site is located in the northwesterly quadrant of the intersection of Veronica Avenue and Lincoln Highway, also is Route 27. And regionally, it has direct connection to Route 287, we're traveling northeast along the roadway. It's important to note that it's an oversized lot with two existing commercial retail structures. The lot is oversized in that 80,000, 80,000 square feet is required within the zone. However, what's existing and proposed is 217,800 approximately. So it's a two-acre, approximately two-acre required versus five acres. So it's more than double the lot size, which is unique to the property, as well as it being located in an intersection with two frontages. The property is located within the general business zone. The permitted use, the proposed tenant use and on-site use are permitted within the zone as well. And the area in the vicinity is developed with commercial retail uses, particularly along Route 27. And it's also bordered by the M2 light manufacturing zone to the northwest.
Okay, if you could just discuss the applicant's proposal, then?
Sure. So just for a little background, I'm sure the board is aware. In 2019, the applicant was granted preliminary approval for this structure, as well as the ATM kiosk. ATM kiosk has since been constructed. But at that time, the signage in connection with this building was not proposed. So it was a 3,000-square-foot fast food restaurant with drive-through. And now a tenant has been identified for the building, which is the Dunkin' Donuts, which will occupy nearly 2,000 square feet of the building. And then additional 1,100 square feet will be the retail, which is another tenant to be determined. A variance was granted in 2019 for the maximum impervious coverage. It was a very minimal relief that was granted. And that is being slightly increased by this application by 1.68%. So we're considering that diminutive relief requested. In order to accommodate the diminutive relief, we are proposing parking spaces to be removed in the center of a shopping plaza to mitigate the additional impervious. These, as the site engineer testified, these spaces will be furthest from the buildings and less likely to be used. As we also discussed, it's more important to have the parking closer to the proposed use and pad site. And again, it's a diminutive relief, and has also been accommodated by the the proposed stormwater management improvements, specifically basin improvements on the site. The second variance relief requested is for the maximum number of wall-mounted signs. There are two signs permitted for the proposed use. And there are five signs proposed. So for retail signs per organ section 112, 111L, for retail signs in multi-tenant building, one sign is allowed per tenant, and each sign may be a maximum 30 square feet. Two additional banner signs are permitted, but they must be located at the rear and side entrance. So as stated, there are two signs permitted and five are proposed. We are proposing three signs, and all are in the logo color, an orange color for the Dunkin'. There are two wall-mounted signs proposed at the rear of the building, 12 square feet and 25 square feet. The 25-square-foot sign is located above a rear entrance or exit. It's that Dunkin' sign. The 12-square-foot sign is located above the rear entrance slash exit for pickup orders. And these elevations are facing the existing plaza center. So these are internal to the site and are predominantly for the interior. Your vehicles will be circulating the site trying to identify the proposed tenant, as well as for pedestrian use. There are also two wall-mounted signs against all of these. These will be fronting on Lincoln Highway. As was stated, the DD wall sign has been reduced in height to three feet. So the square footage of that sign has been reduced approximately 15.5 square feet. And then there is the other Dunkin' sign fronting on Lincoln Highway, which is 25 square feet. And then a fifth wall-mounted sign is a 25-square-foot sign along Veronica Avenue. So those two larger Dunkin' signs, the 25-square-foot signs, are fronting on major public rightways, which are used to identify the site.
Okay, and if you could just go through the positive and negative criteria, whether or not you think the applicant has satisfied those?
Yeah, certainly. So for the C1 standard, the requirement is to demonstrate undue hardship due to unique and exceptional characteristics of the property. The C2 standard is that the application advances purposes of the MLU well and benefits substantially outweigh the detriments, provides a better zoning alternative. And it may also must demonstrate the negative criteria that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without substantial impairing of the intent purposes of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. So I'll start with the C1 for the signage. As I mentioned, the property is unique in that it has two distinct frontages on Lincoln Highway and Veronica Avenue. It's a corner lot. In addition, it is an oversized lot. So the two signs that are permitted would not be sufficient or appropriate. The land development chapter for the township does not contemplate additional site frontage for wall signage, only for freestanding signs, which would, which would probably be more acceptable in a smaller lot. But since this lot is so large, we need additional signage in order to identify the proposed use and pad site. In addition, the signs are for vehicular traffic, as well as for pedestrian traffic. So given that it's a shopping plaza, their signage is for the vehicular traffic along Lincoln Highway and Veronica Avenue, as well as for the internal customers visiting the lot, whether by on foot or pre-approach to identify the Dunkin' Donuts and that tenant.
Okay, with respect to the C2 criteria?
Sure, and for the C2. So the impervious coverage, as I said, was diminutive relief. And essentially, it's the same rationale for relief as the preliminary approval. If, if the action was to comply, would require approximately 30 spaces to be removed from the site. So the intent was to provide spaces in accordance with what's required for the proposed uses, as well as was previously stated, to have the, to have the parking spaces closer to the proposed use. In addition, as was previously stated, the parking spaces in the center of the lot, which were furthest away from the proposed uses, are proposed to be removed and replaced by impervious green area. The benefit of additional parking outweighs any detriment for the increase of 1.68% or a total relief of 2.5% from the impervious coverage requirement. As for the signs, the signs are important for visibility. So signs for the vehicular traffic, pedestrian traffic, given that it's a shopping plaza, as I stated previously, to show the internal visitors to the law, as well as the external, to identify the proposed use. And I just wanted to note that although the maximum allowable sign areas per sign for each facade, if we just sum up the areas of the sign for each facade, the, there's only an axis of seven square foot and 10.5 square foot on the interior and Lincoln Highway frontages respectively. So over, over the 30 square foot permitted, it's only seven square feet and 10.5 square feet in excess. So these additional signs will encourage safe and orderly access to the site, providing adequate identification for the access highways to the two separate retail buildings. In addition, this pad site develops an underutilized portion of the lot over, as was previously shown, the aerial and existing vacant area, predominantly vacant. So it will be redeveloped and reutilized, as well as providing an attractive, an attractive location, including vegetation and, and building facade at a kind of a vacant corner of the intersection of Veronica Avenue and Route 27.
Okay, and does the request also satisfy the negative criteria?
Yeah, so there is no detriment to the public good or impairment to intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance for the impervious coverage, again, and a detriment to the increase. And impervious coverage is mitigated by the new landscaping and greenery around the project area, specifically at the intersection, and also internal to the site. The basement is going to be redesigned to account for the additional impervious. In addition, the application is for permitted use again, and will provide benefit to the surrounding area.
Okay, I believe that's all your testimony, correct?
Yes, I could mention the waivers. I think they were requested to be addressed. There are only two waivers that we are specifically requesting from those commercial design standards in Article 26A. One of them is for the outdoor seating. Dunkin's use, as everyone probably knows, is for the grab-on-the-go type food, primarily beverages. So there's not really any more outdoor seating for this type of use. It's not really just common in the Dunkin' model of business. And then the second waiver that was requested to be addressed is per section one twelve, gap to six point eleven, which is for the design of building not signage. Overall, as architect, as architect testified, the signage is consistent with overall design and architecture of the building. It is specific to branding of Dunkin' Donuts as well. And interestingly, you know, the, the language of the, of the requirement specifics and states, a tenant, tenant signage may be prohibited on the back for rear elevation of buildings. And the, the site and the proposed pad site and building are unique in that there isn't really a rear, because everything is facing either a street or internal to the, to the lot. So even though there are signs proposed on maybe the rear of the building, they're not really functioning as, as a green signage. So to summarize with the waiver relief, the waiver relief is reasonable, that it's diminutive, and, and the, the signage proposed is specific to the, the proposed use, as well as for, and as well as the outdoor seating is just not common with this.
Thank you. That, that essentially wraps up our direct testimony. I believe we hit the most of the comments on the reports, if, if not all of them. And obviously, I would allow, have your consultants clarify, or if they want any other testimony given.
Thanks, Tom. I think at this time, we'll go ahead and open it to the board for questions. Any, any of the, anything to come tonight? Or comments?
Mike, I have a question for the traffic expert.
Go ahead, Paul.
I'm wondering if it was taken into consideration if there are any issues, especially with the Dunkin' Donut use, which is a little higher drive, the drive-in use is probably a little higher volume, as he mentioned. But did he take into consideration the exit and entering of the facility from Veronica and Route twenty seven? And specifically, I just want to know that there's no issues from his point of view. You know, you have a million square foot warehouse that just opened. That's relatively adjacent to property of that shopping center. The driveway for that facility is on Veronica. And according to their testimony, their preferred route for their trucks to get to Route one is through the Veronica, through Route twenty seven intersection. And their traffic movements are probably higher in the morning, coinciding with what was mentioned as the, of the higher movement for Dunkin' Donuts. Do we need to treat the intersection, the driveway exit, let's say, onto Veronica Avenue, any differently? Do we have to have any mitigations? Is the traffic going to be able to handle that with that mix, particularly left turns? I just, I just want to comment about that, because that is a historically very busy intersection.
Sure. Like I said, I know the Dunkin' will increase morning peak hour traffic. But as just stated by the planner, a lot of that is grab-and-go traffic. So it's coming off the existing stream of travel, which could be contributed to the new facility as well. I don't anticipate that there'll be any difficulty in traffic movements at the Veronica driveway or at the State Highway driveway. When the, when the Dunkin' is at its busiest peak, the rest of the center is kind of quieter, where it peaks more towards the afternoons and on Saturdays. So I, I don't anticipate there being any substantial change or impact at these, at these access points.
I'm just concerned about the, I'm not worried about it internally. I'm just concerned about the potential left turns on, out of the facility, onto Veronica Avenue, and onto Route twenty seven. Left turns from your facility and with that volume of traffic. If you say that will work, you're the expert, but I wanted to ask the question.
Yeah, the, the twenty seven access allows for, for right turn egress. The Veronica access is where you'll experience left turns. Those, those left turns will allow people to return to the north on twenty seven. Otherwise, if there were any unforeseen issues, people could use the twenty seven driveway to get, you know, southbound, even the Veronica driveway to head to the west. So there are options. You know, if something.
I'll put it more specifically, are they going to be able to safely exit from Dunkin' Donuts and the shopping center onto Veronica Avenue with left turns and commingle in with the existing traffic at the peak hour? That's what I'm concerned about. If they can make those turns safely out of the shopping center on Veronica.
Yeah, that's understood. I, I don't see it as a safety concern now. I mean, there, there may be some additional delay incurred on site for people making that turn. But I don't see it as any safety concern.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Mike, I have a question for also Mr. Polianak regarding the traffic along the same line. It's what Robert said, making the left turn on twenty seven. I've traveled that, that road in the mornings at peak hours. There is a backup at that intersection, people making left turn from Veronica going towards twenty seven. So making a left turn for the Dunkin' Donuts. And then coming out, there are also cars trying to make a left turn coming out, trying to get back onto the traffic on Veronica Avenue, making the left turn. So I have a, you know, when, so there's two, two points here, a question. And so when the traffic patterns or the study was done at the peak hours, was that taken into consideration, that left turn coming, going into the plaza from Veronica, and also coming out of the plaza and making the left turn back into the traffic, going towards twenty seven?
Yes, I mean, our, our office, as part of the application, didn't perform a full traffic impact analysis where we performed a level service analysis of the intersection. But through the, throughout the application process, the preliminary, as well as this, there's been, you know, visits to the site to make observations of traffic. And as I said, I, I don't anticipate there being any kind of safety concern with that movement. You know, the, when the busiest peaks, when the queue will occur, it's just something that has to occur on site with the delay. And the site's been designed where any delay or queue on site can be accommodated without impacting other operations on site.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we're skewed somewhat by, you know, living in pandemic times, right? But I think in effect that, you know, from what I've observed at that intersection in a normal traffic pattern, you will essentially without restricting it to a return only, that's exactly what's going to happen. I think you would be dissuaded from making a left on to Veronica. So then the question, is it, is it more practical to make that right, right turn egress only rather than a full movement driveway in Veronica? And I mean, I suppose it's something that you could see, you know, whether that is something that, as the site operates, you'd want to revisit.
Yeah, I mean, with, with the, with the primary amount of traffic being passed by in nature, for convenience purposes, a lot of turning movements are right in, right out for this kind of use. So while there will be an element of left turn, the fact that that left turn leads you to the signal and is used to head back northbound, but also exiting onto the twenty seven driveway allows you to also return south into the east. So if there was, you know, recurring customers do see the inability to, to make that turn conveniently, they could easily use the twenty seven driveway as well.
That is, that is true. It, it may, it may, again, for a left turn even on twenty seven, it's probably going to be a little problematic. Certainly going southbound. I'm not as worried about that, because there's multiple ways you can, you can do that. Even making a right turn out of, of your facility, proceeding on Veronica and going, you know, to Churchill or something like that, and sort of cutting back over. But going southbound on twenty seven, not so much of a problem. Going northbound, making a left either onto twenty seven to go northbound or onto Veronica to then go with that left-hand signal on, on the traffic light there. It's going to be, it's going to be difficult. You know, as, as they sort of get back to whatever, whatever normal looks like. May not be the type of traffic you see, depending on, you know, who, who actually, you know, continues to kind of work, work from home, et cetera. Any other board questions or comments?
This is Charles. I have a, I have a question. I have a question about pedestrian circulation on site, given that now there's going to be an increase in the number of vehicles coming for Dunkin' Donuts. Currently, you only have access out to twenty seven. Thank you for that access. But onsite circulation for pedestrians now are at risk, given the increase in traffic. And I think it's, it's furthered even more so considering the site triangle issues with the buildings being adjacent to each other. So can you speak about that potential safety concern? First with the increased circulation, and then second with the site triangles of the buildings being adjacent to each other.
Well, the site plan, I think, as a, as a request of some board comment has been, or professional comment has provided crosswalks and crossings, as you said, from twenty seven. And this one is, is also from Dunkin' Donuts to the existing building adjacent to the Dunkin' Donuts. So crossings have been provided, striped crossings, high visibility crosswalks. I haven't evaluated sightlines from the buildings, but yeah, looking at the plan now, I don't, I don't really see a particular concern. It, it seems as though the, the corners are pretty clear and visible from, from a pedestrian point of view at the Dunkin'.
Well, not a pedestrian point of view, but a motorist-to-motorist point of view. Coming around those corners now, there's going to be increased traffic, so that's a concern there. And when I was speaking about pedestrian circulation, it wasn't just to the adjacent building, considerations from other places throughout the site as well, given that you're going to be the only ones in the plaza serving coffee. Most of the employees are going to be looking to walk to your site from some of those adjacent buildings as well. And so thinking about pedestrian circulation around the entire site would be much more favorable than just to the adjacent building, because it will be your site that's drawing them there.
I agree, there will be an element of employee, possible employee pedestrian traffic heading towards the Dunkin'. I have not evaluated the site with respect to the ability to provide pedestrian crossings from, from additional buildings.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dan.
My concern is with the turn from the general site driveway into the lane for picking up food from the window, the pickup lane, I guess you'd call it. There seems to be some sort of divider between it and the bypass lane. And it's a slightly more of a ninety-degree turn in. And I think that the divider there should be a little bit shorter to facilitate the turn there. The customer I'm thinking about is the landscaper, the pickup truck with the trailer behind him. I think that it would be very difficult to make that turn into the lane there.
I, I believe, and I'll ask Paul to correct me if I'm wrong, it's the striped island to separate the bypass from, from drive-through customers.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. The striped island, it's really meant as a visual delineator. It's not meant to, so that person in the pickup truck, the landscaper, will certainly have enough room to make that turn. We can certainly work with your professionals to adjust that striking. As you said, if you wanted to shorten it up, or kind of give a more gradual turn into that lane, we're happy to do that. But if there were seven cars in line, eight cars in line, and that, and that landscaper was making that decision to get into the final space, they might make a different decision and recirculate at that time. Fortunately, on this site, we're kind of self-regulating in that manner, that if, that if they didn't feel they could make the turn, then they would, they would recirculate, or in a, in a very quick manner, that you would get to around the corner and, and the turn there wouldn't, wouldn't be as impactful to the operations.
Oh, okay. If it's just a painted island and.
Yeah. They're trying to keep it open for, for plowing and for turning movements, for sure.
Yeah, and you've eliminated the two parking spaces there in favor of the waste disposal area, and that makes it easier to make the turn into the bypass lane. So that, that was a benefit of eliminating those. The Environmental Commission, which I'm liaison to, regularly asks whether pervious paving could be used in a parking area. In this case, you're eliminating a lot more parking than you're constructing, but you do have six or so spaces to the east of the, the building. And if those could be pervious paving, then the effect of the increased impervious surface would be lessened.
It's, it's certainly something we can explore for this site. I know for a drive-through use and something that's going to be a little bit more high turnover, we're, we're looking to avoid the pervious pavement. And, and the collection system that we've proposed and the basins and, and the underground water quality, I think, addresses the additional pavement very directly and very efficiently. And, but we're not entirely opposed to pervious pavement. It's something we can certainly consider on our end.
Well, I'm certainly happy to see the rain garden.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we tried to incorporate those green measures into this plan.
I wonder a bit if, if we have a really serious rainstorm, if either the rain garden or the detention basin fill up, where does the overflow water go to?
And, and the, the system itself is designed, if there isn't a significant stormwater event that is above what the design standards are, the hundred-year storm for the NJTP perspective. There are emergency overflows associated with that, which would, would overtop that large basin. They're all interconnected, so the, the control point is in the large basin. And that would overflow onto Veronica Avenue into the same inlet that was connecting our basement into anyway. So essentially, it would just be routed through the grass and into the roadway and into the inlet, into the conveyance system on Veronica Avenue, at no point impacting other properties or, or causing any, any real negative impacts to the surrounding area.
Okay, that's what I kind of suspected that I wanted to ask.
Thanks, Ted. Any other board questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I could go into a few questions. This is Mark speaking.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the first thing is just to, really just to remind the board of something that was incorporated into the original approval. It wasn't required to be done in association with the, with the ATM. And they've spoken to it a little bit, but I just want the engineer to confirm it, that the overall site plan, in addition to the Dunkin' Donuts, there's the removal of four par, I think it's eight parking spaces in the middle of the parking lot, which does show up on the exhibit. And then behind the main retail building, that's kind of off the exhibit. But on the, on the site plan, there's removal of about twenty, give or take fifteen to twenty parking spaces behind that building with landscaping being put in. So that's part of the reason, or part of the way that you're balancing the stormwater needs and the impervious. I just, if you could just confirm that that is indeed part of your site plan.
Yes, certainly. And that's a great point. It was part of the preliminary approvals. I didn't touch on it too specifically this evening. But we're removing all of the parking along the rear of the westernmost building. And we're adding a significant landscape island to the center of the site, which you saw on the site plan rendering. And we're adding a significant landscape island to the center of the site, which you saw on the site plan rendering. And removing eight spaces from that, that as well. We have a surplus of parking on this site like we talked about. So to balance some of the impervious coverage that's added as part of this, this development, we're removing parking and adding landscaping in other areas. And overall, you get to that seventy-two and a half percent number, which is a very small increase over what was approved and, and certainly is addressed by the stormwater.
All right. And again, I just wanted to make sure that, because again, that was on the preliminary. It was, it was not required to be done with the ATM. Um, but here, this is the larger proposal and, uh, you're doing it as part of this, um, it'll be part of this site work. Um, I'm going through the CME report and, um, I just noted two or three things that I'd like you to address. Um, one is on page two, under general site, general site improvements, comment nine. He talks about the width of some of the drive aisles. And it looks like when, where there's a angled spaces, it needs to be eighteen feet, and he thought it measured out to seventeen feet. And then his second comment is about the one-way, um, one-way traffic aisles are required to be fifteen and the bypass lane is ten. So he was, uh, wondering if those, if, are you asking for design waivers from that?
Yeah, we are. And we touched on that briefly in direct testimony, but essentially the effective lane width of those spaces that are backing out of the angled spaces on the eastern side of the site um, is, is much greater than that eighteen feet. There's, there's two ten-foot delineated lanes plus an additional few feet behind the spaces. And, and really that delineation isn't even needed because by that time you're out of the drive-through and that, that traffic is intermingling. So there's, there's roughly twenty-five to twenty-six feet behind those spaces for people to back out. And you won't really have cars queued up unless they stop at the stop sign, which is a normal operation for the shopping center. And then as far as the, the bypass lane that goes around the building, like I said in earlier in testimony, ten feet for the drive-through lane and ten feet for the bypass is a Dunkin Donuts standard. It's also within industry standard for a drive-through bypass lane combination. Um, but it does fall below the, the fifteen foot requirement for, for one-way traffic. Um, that is in your ordinance. So yes, we are requesting a design waiver from that, um. Both of those items, the technicality on the angled parking, a real waiver on the, on the, um, on the ten-foot bypass lane.
Okay, um, there's two comments under stormwater. Uh, one is comment five, where he says that above ground basins and rain gardens are not allowed within ten feet of a property line, including the street right of way. Is, are you proposing, is the rain garden within ten feet of the property line and then detention basin?
We are intending to comply with that. The high water line and the grading will certainly not be within ten feet. And, and if we have to make a small adjustment to ensure that your, your professionals are comfortable with that, we're, we're, we're able to do that. So we intend to comply with that regulation.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then with respect to the rain garden, comment twenty-two. He's saying that there's a existing gas service and I think electric lines that serve the ATM that go underneath the rain garden. Um, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, we intend to comply with this regulation as well. I believe if the utility line for the ATM was installed in a slightly different location, we will confirm that location and make sure that the basin does not impact any of the existing and/or proposed utilities on the site.
Okay. And I know you had a lot of back and forth with CME, um, designing, uh, your stormwater system. He still has about twenty-five comments. I not an engineer, so I'm not gonna comment to whether they're significant or not. But so my question is, will any of, in, in satisfying these comments, will there be any changes to the site plan, uh, different to what you're presenting to the board tonight?
No substantive changes. It's, it's mostly, um, it's mostly the, the calculations that we're providing and some of that ten-foot setback that you're looking for is you might see a small tweak to the size and shape of the basins, but overall the design and the function of the, of the overall site, the stormwater management system will remain the same. And we intend to comply with all of the comments on the stormwater management system in that report.
Okay. And then two questions from, uh, related to my report. Um, well, one is in terms of the pedestrian connection to the retail building across the, uh, the aisle, if you will. Is, are there drop curbs on the other side? The site plan doesn't indicate.
And, and we will make sure delineate that with grading. And I'm assuming you're gonna get into the, the, the crosswalks as well. We intend to do this, the, the, um, the different color and material of the crosswalks as well to address those comments in your letter.
Okay, so the drop curbs, uh, on, on either side of that, uh,
Correct, yeah.
Okay, great. And then last question for you, and I have, I have two for the architect. Along the, between the, the drive, uh, drive-through area and Veronica Avenue, uh, design standards indicate that there should be a hedge and/or a, uh, decorative wall. Your compliance chart indicates that there's both, but I only see landscaping. Can you clarify what is being proposed?
Yeah, we only have landscaping in that area. We have, um, a planted evergreen hedge along the drive-through as well as the parking to screen the headlights there. There is no wall.
Okay. Um, okay, so then I have two questions for the architect. Uh, one is, I, 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 the submitted plans didn't identify the materials. And you showed the exhibits. I only heard the word hardy plank. Can you, can you go over what the materials are going to be?
If, if you look at the, um, mark, um, on the right side of exhibit A nine, S K two. Uh, on the, on the title block right side, we have colored chart. If I may screen, um, I don't think I can share the screen, but on the right side, we're specifying what all materials, the materials that we're specifying. And it's, it's related to S four and S two and, um, and so on and so forth. Um, so the materials are listed on the, on the elevation sheet on the right side.
Okay, well, okay, so what? I think, I don't think that's an exhibit. I can't read the exhibit that's on there. It's so basically, can you just describe to the board just verbally then what? Because it's not on what you submitted officially.
Oh, okay. So we, we, I apologize because the, the colored elevation, um, uh, do show it. If I, is there a, is there a me sharing the screen again?
Um, yes, I can do that.
Okay, um, can everyone see, see my screen?
Yes.
Um, so if, if we look at the right side of the title block where my cursor is, um, what we're saying is it's a colored representation. I know it's a little bit difficult to, to relate because it's two separate, uh, uh, it's not exactly on the, on the drawing, but the, the dark, dark color, um, it's hardy plank charcoal color, but the, the texture is small slats. Um, and again, the hardy plank panel, which is the gray on top, where you see all the gray, um, gray elevation. This is all hardy plank, but the texture is with larger panels there. Um, and then it is brown shade that we see here around the, the drive-through window. They're also hardy plank. Now, the reason why it's hardy plank, various different sizes and texture is because it, it, it's closely represents what is around the, the existing buildings. It is different physically. So if you look at them, you can make sure that at least texture with various different score lines and sizes. We differentiate that. And then there are, um, accent, extruded metal exit, accent bands, uh, which is actually, um, right, right here, where the Dunkin Donuts sign is. So, uh, most of, one of the, the materials that we're talking about is, is hardy plank. But, uh, they are in various different sizes and pattern, um, which differentiates and, and gives the, the interest. Um, of taking away the monotony of the, the facade.
Okay, and you'll obviously update the plans that are on file to reflect what you just
We, we, exactly, yeah, we'll do that.
Okay, great. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, thanks, Mark. Uh, any other comments from the board? Or questions or any other way? All right, do not, um, entertain the motion open to the approval. You wanna make that motion? All right, maybe Bob was starting. I'll go ahead and make a motion open to the public.
Move to open to the public.
There you go. Well, then I'll second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, if, uh, you'd like to speak on this application, uh, comment on, on this application only. Um, you need to use the chat feature if you're on the webex or star three feature if you're on the call.
Yeah, we can also, also use the raise hand function in, uh, in the board as well. And we'll just give the public a few moments to indicate their desire. We're, we're not seeing anybody.
I would move to close to the public.
One second. All in favor? All right. The meeting is closed. Um, Donna, if you have any final comments? Donna, do you have any, uh, closing comments?
Uh, just on the R C is that, you know, we're looking at, uh, permitted use. We already have preliminary approval. We have the tenant, we've come in, we've, uh, demonstrated, I believe, entitlement to the two variances that we're seeking. Um, I think it's gonna be a nice improvement to the site, uh, bring some activity to it, and we respectfully request that the board grant some approval.
Thanks. All right, I'll go ahead and, um, entertain a motion on this application. All right, so you guess there's no one rushing forward to make that. I'll go ahead and do it. Maybe I'll get a second. So I'm going to make to approve the application with the two variances for signage and impervious coverage as well as the design waivers on that were necessary, that were also talked about. Um, assuming the applicant complies with all, um, staff reports, um, that they indicated that they would do. And I think that's, that's my motion. Peter, anything you'd like me to add to that?
I think you hit it on the head. It's with all conditions agreed to by the applicant during the course of the year.
Sounds good. You have a second?
I'll be second.
Okay.
Councilman Chase. Councilman Chase. Councilman Chase.
I said yes.
Thank you. Carl Howe.
Yes.
Mahir Rafi.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnar.
Let's go back to Jennifer. Um, my, uh, my back froze up a little bit.
Charles Brown.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Carol Schmidt.
Yes.
Sammy Shabon.
Yes.
And Chairman Arcini.
Yes.
And Jennifer Ragnar. Let me see.
She, she just texted that we're both yes.
Peter, is that okay? Or do we have to hear her?
If we can, if we can find her somewhere, because I'd rather hear her voice.
All right, hold on.
So.
Hold on. I'm coming, Jennifer. Hold on.
We made it ninety-nine percent of the way through. My computer just froze, my back froze.
Well, we had nowhere to go but up after the last.
I just want you to see that it's her that I'm calling. Hi, Jen.
Bye.
What is your vote, missy?
My vote is yes.
I think we got that. All right.
Okay.
You're approved.
Great. Thank you so much, guys. Have a great night.
Thanks, you too.
Take care.
Thank you. Mark, Steve, any other business?
Nope.
Okay, if not, I'll make the motion to adjourn. And somebody will second that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, have a good night.
Everybody.
Good night.
All right, stay safe. See you.